I call a meeting to order. Wes is up here. And welcome everyone here, new people on the bond issue. Jackie, would you like to say a word?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We do not have Ms. Gray. Melissa's not on?
Ms. Power.
No, Melissa hasn't joined the channel either.
Motion to approve the agenda. A mooted segment and a discussion in favor, signify the saying. First name is approved. We will now go to superintendent discussion of bond projects.
We have been working on diligently for the past year in our bond, getting things passed, selling our bonds, working on a scope of work for our projects. And have been able to at board meetings provide tidbits, some updates as we go along. I thought it would be good to have a work session where you could actually talk to our lead project manager, John Jeffress, and have him present where we are on some things. So got a different voice, different take, somebody who was on top of our projects. And I have been here tonight to kind of go over with you what we have done, where we are, what we are planning. And we all have to realize that things are going to change along the way, things have changed so far. So, John, if you want to kind of get us started on, you know, the plan that we laid out, what you have prepared for tonight. Today, it's not quite right.
Yeah, it's good.
It's been a long day, but yes, you are correct.
So I've got a little just information here, kind of run through as an overall update, and then I'll share some progress drawings with you as well, just so you see what we've been doing. Ed specs, they are in, they've been finalized based on information that we have. Not so that we, but Rob Pillar with Inspire has provided educational specs for the projects.
Who was that person you said?
Rob Pillar with Inspire. It's his company. And he does educational specs for a variety of school systems in West Virginia and other states.
Wasn't he who was with us on the football field?
That was somebody else.
No, this football field, that was a facilities, football specialist that they had.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that here in a minute, too.
Rob was with you when you were in a law library.
Yeah, law library, come a long way from the first meeting, but yeah.
So with that, we have Hedgesville Pre-K, Inwood Pre-K, Mountain Ridge Elementary, Falling Waters Elementary. And after, you know, Ron and I have talked and looking at all the numbers, Falling Waters Intermediate. Once we took a look at the actual numbers that were going to be housed at the two elementary schools, it became apparent, and Ron had a nice idea on, hey, there's a huge need on the northern end here in Berkeley County for intermediate. It even proved today, we were just at the Potomac. You know, and speaking with the principal, he said, largest in the state of this intermediate building. So it's busting out the seams, you already have one building over there that's a trailer modular. I think, you know, it just makes a lot of sense to approach that. So today, for us to begin our design phase, we need approval from Berkeley County on the education specs that have been presented to move forward with design. And that's just, you know, simple, yep, we're good, let's move forward. I talked to Ernie about the intermediate building after we met today, Ron. For the options at Falling Waters, if you do a combined elementary intermediate building, okay? So two offices, two parking lots, two of everything, but it's a combined, maybe we share some common walls, maybe a kitchen, and mechanical spaces, electrical, that'll help on the funding side. As far as how much it costs, it'll help bring that down some. It'd be a large, one roof, but two buildings combined.
So John, let me step back for just a second and say to the entire group, because this is all still relatively new. In the planning stages of this, we had planned to work on Beddington, Marlowe, Inwood, all while construction was going on, which was going to cause us to have a need to place the pre-K classes. So the plan, and it makes some sense, the plan was to build these elementary schools larger than we actually need, house the pre-K students in those classrooms while we worked on the current facilities at Inwood, Jerks, or Beddington and Marlowe. However, we don't need to do it that way. And what that does is that that caused us to need seats immediately for the pre-K kids, to look at these elementary classrooms, to make sure that there's room in these elementary classrooms for the additional pre-K kids while we're building everything. So it was going to cause us to need additional seats. You know, and a year ago, we were talking about elementary schools that needed 800 seats. And looking at the numbers, we are without, if we can find a way, which we have, to not have to displace those pre-K kids while those schools are being built, then we wouldn't need 800 seats for many years. And the advantage to building those 800 seats and put pre-K in them in the beginning was when pre-K moves out, as these other facilities are being finished, now we have a large elementary school that can house more students, which we're going to be growing. So that was, in our minds, we thought we're going to grow into these. But it's become apparent to me in the last couple of months that our need immediately on the north end is intermediate. And if there was a way to look at getting more of a community intermediate school at the Marlowe level that goes all the way up to fifth grade, that would answer some problems that we have with Potomac being out of space. We have a portal there now, we're already shipping students out of Potomac, and by the time we would get to the next cycle of a bond,
you're eight to 10 years.
You were eight to 10 years away.
Before you opened that building.
You know, so that was going to be difficult for us to do. So what we're able to do is hold the pre-K sections, do them individually a little bit slower, put the priority on these pre-K classrooms, and shrink the size of them, take the money that was going to be spent on 1,600 pre-K to two students, make it now closer to 1,000, is that about right? And are we looking at 1,000? 1,200? The two pre-K, or the two K2 class buildings. Instead of making a pre-K2, we're going to make the K2.
K2, that's right.
From the beginning. Which is going to allow us to have some money left over to put towards.
Yeah, so we've looked at the math.
Square footage of all of this is going to be approximately the same.
Yeah, we looked at the math from the square footage, and then you put the dollar out through that square footage for budgeting purposes and planning. And it's not too far off, depending on how it all shakes out. But right now, it's right around that 160,000 square foot, which is what you budgeted for is 160,000 square feet. So if we can get it to 160, depending on how the final design shakes out at Falling Waters, then you're relatively the same dollar overall. Now, we may look at the gymnasiums, cafeterias, we've talked about rightsizing them for 600, you know, students versus 400. So that as you grow and expand, you don't have to mess with your kitchens and cafeterias, gymnasiums. So we may end up being at, say, 170,000, 175,000 square feet. Again, I'm just using real round numbers until we get specifically into those facilities. That's something we're, as a team, going to have to decide on, how to move forward with them. And I think it's appropriate to consider that, you know, and spend that money today to right-size your gyms and cafeterias, libraries, music, to house 600 students versus 400.
Well, I've thought a lot about this since our last work session. And when it was mentioned that we put an intermediate combined in that one building and have two separate, have a separate cafeteria, separate staff. Well, I would like, if we're going to do that, just make it K through five. I mean, it doesn't even make sense to have to go to that separate, separate all that.
We haven't talked about that. And one of their thoughts was keeping with the model that Berkeley County has, which is the intermediate has a separate building from the primary or your elementary.
And I agree with that, but keeping with the model seems more costly than going K through five.
What did, what did all, it really is, depends on how you look at it, Jackie. What that would allow us to do is have the same plan as you have a building, you have a main building and you have two wings that are off of it, the way that our buildings are now, they're prepared for that third wing, the addition.
Yeah.
If they're one building, it's harder to make an addition for one thing. Then you've got to do two stories, or you're going to do two additions at the same time, when you may not need both of those additions down the road. So making them share common areas, which is what we're discussing, maybe kitchen, maybe gyms, maybe cafeteria areas.
I'm just thinking of staff, we have such a hard time staffing now. And it won't get, it's not going to get any better, that you're going to have twice as much staff, especially in administration and office. I just, I don't know, that just seems more logical to go K through five.
So you're saying do that so that there's one office, one administrator, one everything there for all of that?
Yeah, but you'd have to have more assistants.
Okay.
I mean, I just, I don't, just because we've done that in the past, and there was a reason we did that in the past, for pre-K.
You know, what?
We don't have to do that now.
Understand? And that's definitely something to think about. The only thing that I can say there is you're definitely talking about different levels. The assessments are different, and they start to change third grade up versus K through two, and the specialties there, but that is something we can certainly look at.
Yeah, I mean, our team is designing and under construction on a K5 right now. So it's, it's not that it can't be done.
The trick to that is, when you open that building, it becomes one of the largest elementary schools already in the state with one administrative team before there's growth.
Well, we had that at Berkeley Heights. It was the largest, it was the largest elementary school in the state for a long time.
And, right, and right now Potomac is, and we're looking to divide that thing up.
Yeah.
It, you know, so.
I'm not saying it's the good statistic to have.
I think we can look at that, I think we can look at it and see. I'm hesitant to build an elementary school that would become the largest in the state and plan for growing, and have wings that we're going to plan to add on, and have one principal in charge of that. That would be difficult, that I think would be a challenge.
I think the, you know.
I don't want to get hung up on just the office part right now, but the theory here is to be able to build, to take some of the the intermediate swelling that's taking place on the north end of the county.
Right.
And we would be able to give back to, and I know Mr. Murphy probably is excited about this, because I heard him talk about a K5 school.
Well, that's not what I imagined.
No, 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 but I'm just saying that, but to be able to pull this back, I'm, it's still going to be a significant size, so I would recommend two separate schools.
You talk about only one principal on one of this, well, middle schools only have one principal, or high schools only have one principal, principal, I mean, that's unrealistic.
From a, just a sheer number standpoint, administratively, you may have one that's the primary over everything and an assistant. You know, or you split them up, K1, 2, and you have two principal offices. So I think those can be over.
That's definitely something I think that we could think about doing. I mean, I see in the future having two schools, well, in my vision, would be two schools on that site with, you know, six, seven, 750 kids each at an elementary level. Supervision there would, I mean, I think having that as one would be very difficult. The numbers of that part.
Jackie, I appreciate it, I think we're going.
Well, I just have been thinking hard about it, and I didn't want to go with.
And I'm not saying you're wrong.
And I mean, right, that's all we've got, the two staffs, I mean, you have all of that, and you have, I can picture it, you know, you have the wings out, just like we do now. It's not a whole lot different, but you have an intermediate school and an elementary school, all in the same school. So it doesn't make sense.
At the end of the day, if you have intermediate, elementary, it's K5, your administrative, it's just a matter of how you place them and what, how you look at it from your side and assign roles and responsibilities. You probably still need two gymnasiums. You know, I would imagine.
Well, you're going to have to.
For that many class, you know, you've got to be able to get them in the gym and out, music, you know, there's still some things you're just going to have to have to, with that size of a facility.
One thing for sure, we need to make sure we're doing it right, because that's such a growing area, excuse me, Pat, I'm sorry.
We, Chief, when I, I think it would be healthier to have one administration, so you have consistency. We overlooked in this county, if you put all the kids in the most vulnerable spot together, intermediate, primary on the bus. And that's where you have the greatest concern of misbehavior and management. But yet, we can put children together on a bus, primary and the intermediate together, plus kindergarten, not the pre-K. And we don't think anything about management there. But if you put one principal in charge of the entire building, you want to build consistency there, because you only have one leader, you won't have two different people in the same building having different rules. But the importance is that you have good assistance, you may even need more than two assistants in this process. You may need areas of things, but you could, but you, we lose the momentum of the interest of the parents when they go from the primary to the intermediate and then on. But if you got the parents in a school that they knew the rules for the same K through five, with one leader, you have one voice there, and that's an advantage. The other thing is, whether you have 800 kids or 400 kids, you have one voice. So the parents adapt to that school and understand what is expected of the child established by that school leadership. And you don't have this break of upstairs, downstairs, whatever you have. The other thing is, is that you have familiarity with the families when you have them all under one roof. You don't have this fragmentation where Dr. Smith over at Orchard View told me, I'm just getting to know the kids when they leave, because they're there, I think, for two years. So you get the familiarity with the families and the neighborhoods when you have them all at K5. It's important that you have good assistant principals. But the idea of having that consistency and familiarity and having those parents carry on that involvement from primary to intermediate is also a thing that you have when you don't have this fragmentation. You also pick up time. You don't have buses running from one school to another, so your instructional time is a little longer. And you have, and the children are better at it than that. So all of these factors, I think, I saw it at Winchester, and we didn't have the efficiency. Question to you, to get off of that topic. Question I have for you is, when you, like you say a gym, couldn't you get a netting or something and separate them?
There's a lot of different options, whether you put a wall between them, a net, you know, it's up for, you know, we figure all that out during design.
I just, I've seen schools.
And the same with the cafeteria, maybe you have two cafeterias with a big wall in between them that can be pulled back for, you know, a community event.
Well, I'm sorry, I threw.
No, I first of all want to say.
This is the time to do this.
Those are the types of discussions that we need to have. We are less than two weeks into this whole idea of, hey, you know what? Now that we have the time, because the way we're approaching our pre-K centers, and we're looking at the numbers, we actually can have the same square footage and incorporate it intermediate school. So that's how this whole conversation started, and we can incorporate that intermediate school on the property that we have to serve an area that is needed immediately. So, I mean, this work session right now, we just wanted to lay it out there, we have not really had a chance to break it down. I like the idea of a unified school and unified leadership. I do think it will be challenging at the intermediate level to have six different grades using one gymnasium. I don't think that's going to be possible. Six different grades using one cafeteria, I don't think that's going to be possible. You're going to have to have different sized furniture, because you're talking about, you know, the different ages of the kids. You know, but having one leader, maybe when we open it and have a plan to add a second if we get to, you know, so large.
But you know, we're talking about things that we always did, you had a big desk, little desk, and then we're all in one school. Because we had K through five, or at least one through five.
It's all doable.
Yeah.
I am not saying that this is not, all I'm saying right now is we need to have third grade through fifth grade added to the campus on the north end.
Yeah.
We don't have a plan on how that's going to be, I haven't even decided, I told you before, I don't know if we're going to stack them, we're going to put them side by side.
That's all.
The problem, the plus with stacking is you got one roof. The negative with stacking is you've got stairs, you're going to have to add an elevator, you've got maintenance with all of that. And then if you do younger kids upstairs, or younger kids downstairs, wherever the growth is, you're going to have to add on there, maybe the addition. You don't need the second floor of the addition at the same time as your building. So it causes some additional concerns down the road if you build up. As far as what the office is going to look like, we can decide that.
Yeah, but one advantage of stacking is that it leaves a bigger footprint, a smaller footprint, and the price of land that are so expensive that you might be able to put something elsewhere.
So one of the important things is funding. Okay, we're going to pay. Well, right now, we have local funds to the ball, and we're currently working on, need submission. Ty and I met this morning, and we're actively pursuing that. So, right now, in talking with the SBA, they are good with two separate buildings, just like you had originally planned. Okay? Two elementary. If that changes to K5 or a K1, 2, and intermediate connected, you know, then we need to make a call. So I'm talking with Ernie on the way over today, after we spoke with Ron. He said, I'll call today and, you know, feel them out, see what we can do, if that's a direction, you know, we want to go.
Okay, I asked, that's why I stepped out with Jessica, because this is a work session, and our policy does not allow us, go ahead, Jessica.
We can't vote on anything, but you guys can come to an agreement.
Yeah.
You guys can come to like an agreement or consensus, you just can't take them.
You can't take an official action.
And a majority of these, this is why I feel comfortable talking about that here tonight. Majority of these situations across the state of West Virginia and here, you don't need a vote. You don't need a vote. You're authorizing me to speak on your behalf to be able to do that. Now, I don't have a problem having you vote, but right now, it would just be next week before we can do that. And then if we're going to set the precedent that we're always going to vote, then, you know.
Yeah, I think it's just in general.
Pushes some things out.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, when I saw the word approval up there, that I.
Yeah, and that's, again, that's just, you know, me asking, like, for us to formally start, I just need, you know, Mr. Stevens, last thing to say.
If we feel bad about things here, it's my approval that I will give you that.
Currently, just so you know, currently, the Falling Waters has been submitted, the educational specification has been submitted as a, as two buildings as a K1, 2, and a 3, 4, 5 underneath one roof. That's how it's been submitted. Now, the nice thing is, Mountain Ridge is virtually identical to Falling Waters. Size, student population, it's virtually, so it wouldn't take very long for that one to, you know, be, it's already been turned in once and we have to revise it. Okay, wrong. So it's, do we want to go to that K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, do we want a K5? You know, if we want to approach it in that way, then all I need is, I just need to know, yeah, let's make a phone call and see what we can do.
Well, and I'm not trying to throw a ringer in anything, I just have thought a lot about that since our last meeting.
It's good conversation, good conversation.
Michael, do you have a question to ask Damon? Damon, do you have anything?
No, no, I've just been trying to figure out which one would make sense. I understand Jackie's point of view, and also the other, so it's a difficult decision to make, especially in a growing area like that, that's the, our biggest problem, is it's growing so fast.
Hey, is Melissa on line?
I can't see her.
So while she's looking for that, I just want to say this. I don't want us to go back to ground zero and create a whole new building. We have specs and everything that we have spent six months preparing for the SBA presentation for a K2 facility. And I would rather you guys say, you know, just stay with the K2 facility and suck it up on the intermediates, and then we'll put portables wherever, than have to go back to the drawing board again and put us behind on the ed specs and the construction of the K2 facility. So that's kind of why we have it separate under one roof, they can be connected. But just in case something falls through with that intermediate, we still have the K2 being built. If we stack them, we can't do that.
My notes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can tell them.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You know what I'm saying? So if we stack them and something goes wrong, if something is up with SBA, if we decide we want to, you know, reevaluate and redo these classrooms, and who's going to be on what level, the SBA is going to need to know all of that. So if we stack them, we're going to have to redo the ed specs. So keeping them as two buildings under one roof is going to allow us to be able to continue with that K2 and have somebody working on this other building. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, but you can convince me that the SBA has its plans for millions, thousands, hundreds, K5 schools, because that's what they're used to, more practical, we don't need people that have.
It's not that, it's all the process that we had to get ready to present to the SBA, we had to go back, we had to start that again.
Well, that's all I'm saying is.
To get it ready.
If we want to go down the path of approving, of recommending the K5 or a K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, either option, I just need to know, so I can call Ernie and say, hey, let's make a phone call, let's see what they say, feel them out.
I don't want to slow down the process, that's for sure.
No, and at the end of the day, you know, we just, Ron and I, when we talked, it's, what can we do? What, you know, biggest bang for our dollar today to help Berkeley County students. And the intermediate, you know, Ron suggested the intermediate up on the north side, you know, it's. And the intermediate, you know, Ron suggested the intermediate up on the north side, you know, it's numbers wise, we're very close.
Jack, Jackie, we uh mentioned that we had talked about this at the last work session. So we're not being blindsided here by this. And uh and I'm sure we have all had a chance to think about. My question is, are you, are are you, are are you all ready to make a recommendation of stacked or spread out?
We'll sort all the, we'll sort the stacking or spread out during the design phase.
Or you're asking for us to approve uh.
Recommendation.
Recommendation to go with the intermediate elementary site.
Underneath one roof, whether it's a K five or or a uh K one, two and an intermediate, one roof, okay? And that that's how I would explain it to the SBA with Ernie.
Is there any objection? Damon, do you have any objection to going that route?
No.
Michael? Okay, you you have our approval with.
Blessing.
Blessing, yes, go go.
Okay, we'll reach out. We'll be in touch, Mr. Stevens, and let you know how that how that shakes out. Um, so with that, I would also, you know, the other three buildings and the two pre-Ks and Mount Ridge. No, she's not. Uh, the other two pre-Ks and Mount Ridge, we can start the design, okay? I need just, yes, we're we're good and I can request that, you know, from Mr. Stevens. But that's our next step to moving the needle on the design phase, you know, for the three new buildings there. Having said that, I'm also waiting for surveys from uh Mike Roberts here locally. Soon as we get surveys and the approval to move forward, we can start our process.
What if you go a K five site at Marlowe and you like it? Thinking of the other site too, I see.
Or an intermediate, I'm sorry, yeah.
There's already a three, five there. There's not a space to put the K two attached to that there.
What are you talking about? Oh, yeah.
Um, the other thing, just additional updates, we are, we got the approval for doing school boring to Tomahawk-Martinburg High School. And spring mills for the press boxes, so that's going to be taking place. There'll be some drill rigs showing up and, you know, doing some. Doing some work there. As I said, surveys, we're waiting for information from Mr. Roberts. Future bid events, so we're moving forward with design. CMTA, the performance work, Jackie, through that committee, you know, we were, we're moving forward. Uh, we, I say that as a as a global MKA and CMTA, working collectively on those performance contracts. Uh, so there are several buildings involved with that. Um, they are, you know, their goal is to adhere to that fifteen point eight million dollar budget that was established for the bond. For those uh facilities and we we went through that. Jackie, I think in late July, early August, and it's been under design since then. So that will go off the bid mid to late uh September. Here's a, the number six, design teams have started. Uh, they've done some site visits, uh drawing sheets are set up. What ventilation, load calculations are moving forward, ceiling drawings are progressing, controls are progressing. They walk through with the fire marshal, the restroom drawing. So restroom wise, we're, our team is doing restrooms as part of this performance contract. And the reason at Winchester and Byrd is they're going to be in there tearing up ceilings and disrupting the school next summer. Okay, there is no sense in us doing restroom work the following summer. As a separate package while they're tearing it up. So it only makes sense to do it together. And that's, you know, we worked with CMTA and Mr. Stevens and, you know, obviously Jackie, you and the committee to um to come to that conclusion. So the fifteen point eight will be the base budget for CMTA and then we'll add those restrooms on top of that. And you'll see that number as a separate, okay?
This is not for you, but I was reading in the Gazette this morning. Last week's paper, between two thousand and five, I think, two thousand and twenty. In West Virginia, the uh utility rates went up ninety percent. We were second only to Michigan. And increased the utility cost. And I was just wondering. Mr. Stevens, if we could check with our. Pleasure office, find out those non-energy saving schools. If that could be uh checked to see how our energy rates went up between two thousand and five and. I'll get, I'll bring the paper back.
Yeah, yeah, we we can check any of that if you provide us exactly what you want.
Bring it in. It was just, I was surprised because that, you know, we're an energy state. We are second with Michigan rate increases.
Can I use another question? I'm still, I'm still way up the sheet. You said this earlier and I was thinking of something, something else. But uh, cause you know, I want to, I want to do this right, so I'll just throw that out there. But I want to, elementary and uh intermediate combined, student total, we're we're expecting how many? Only can't forget that.
Well. Okay, so say that together, elementary and intermediate together. On that site, what we would be looking at? Um, I don't have that number with me. It would be the total number of students that are at at Marlowe. Right now, plus uh any students that would be taking that direction from.
Cause that that gives me a thought of. K through five or do I want all these, you know, like two separate, like.
Well, I I just want you to think, it's going to be K through five. It's going to be K through five. The building is all we're talking about right now. So for you, when you're talking, you're in your mind, you're talking about how are we going to run the building? We, that can be made, those decisions can be made. We need to bring in people. We need our people here to discuss this with us. We need, you know, our team of, you know, instructional people to, you know. And and discuss that. We have not discussed that yet. All we're talking about is getting the facility to to be able to do that. That's what he's talking about anyway.
And I want to slow it down, but I'm, when I talk, when I see numbers of kids, that kind of change fixes my mind on what I'm thinking about.
So I'd have to confirm, but if you look at this right here on the screen. Can you see that?
Still need a little bit more, I think.
That gives you uh kindergarten, black classroom, twenty hundred students, one through two, eleven and twenty-five. Race three through five, special weather, total enrollment, current, six eighty, okay? Program capacity being twenty-three.
So what we would be taking in there right now is six hundred eighty.
Yeah, but I mean, like, you have fifty-nine kids.
Over time. It's just today, looking at that.
Today you'd have that many. If we opened the building today, that's what it would be.
And that's at an eighty-three percent utilization rate. Um, desirable is eight-five by the SBA's. We're we're really close, you know, by the time we get done with the design, we may be at that number. So that that gives you an idea. All right, uh, moving on here, I've got.
I I had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
How many total would fit into the school at maximum capacity? That chart you just showed.
Eight twenty-three is what the capacity would say it is. Eight twenty-three.
Okay, that's what I was.
That's all the rooms being being utilized all at the same time. It's eight twenty-three.
Okay, that's what, make sure I'm reading it right. Thank you.
Yeah, I I don't know that that means there's eight hundred and twenty-three in just a classroom area though. I think that includes use of the gymnasium, but that.
I have that for all. Uh, but right now, he's estimating a hundred thousand square foot building, yeah, for that. You know, that's doable though, because the other ones are around sixty, sixty-five. So you know, we said one sixty was allocated. If we're at one sixty-five, let's just say one seventy, maybe, you know, we we look at this and say, well, we need another little bit. It's within ten thousand square feet of your, of your number, okay?
With what we currently have allocated. That's why we think it's doable because of the number of students that we have.
But no, okay, from a financing standpoint, let's say the SBA does the twenty-five. You got to put your portion in and we need an extra five. I'm I'm using very round, five to ten million dollars. From the, from the county side, you know? Move forward, you got to, you got to understand that that is a real possibility, you know, to make it work. But each intermediate building, and and you get it for five, two and a half, a three year versus eight. Well, maybe you still got, you know, if if you move forward with it more.
We've got spring mills, forty, forty-eight million. I think they all moved to the other school. Canal County was over a hundred.
All in, all situations are different. I know down in Canal, they were moving millions of yards of dirt to different, different locations. So moving on, uh other bid events that we're looking at, um spring mills, press boxes, we're shooting for the end of September. We do need to get our our soil boring. We have the survey. So we'll we'll continue with that. It may, it may linger into October. We'll see. I'm trying to be aggressive with our team and moving things along here. Um, in October-ish timeframe, we want to go off the bid for Hedgesville Elementary. Martinsburg High School renovations, Martinsburg concession stand renovations and their restroom. And the Musselman Middle School ceiling replacement. So those four would be one package. Um, Martinsburg High School additions renovations and Tomahawk addition would be first quarter of next year is our goal, you know, to go off the bid. Hedgesville Field, Musselman's Track and Field, submit drawings to uh per- permittinging and whatnot. In September, October, review it, go off the bid, receive the bids and and make that happen. Um, pretty, pretty quickly here.
Do we have to go through the building inspector in Burke County?
I thought you said no.
Um, different thing, different pieces of the puzzle will require. Different agencies for review, okay? So the DEP, we can't, can't bypass the DEP.
But it's not county, it's it's.
That, yeah, so the D, so that would need to take place. Um.
What did they decide? What did the gentleman recommend from Hedgesville? Have we received that yet?
Yeah, we'll we'll get into uh some more information here only in a few minutes, yep. But start construction and finish that before the ball season of next year for both facilities. It's just timing, when do we start? For track and Musselman? Actually, it's pretty uh persistent here. Um, update from Kevin, they've done some investigation from CMTA, he's their PM. Um, again, we're, we're working together on over uh R two. Now, Hedgesville and Musselman. So that's Musselman, that is in review with the committee. A couple of people there, I think from Musselman have been, we've been flowing back and forth as far as colors, layout, design. Um, and then Hedgesville, we've got a couple of virgins here, one of them. Another. Here's another. It's got a few, it's it's coming along here. Let me move over to Musselman Project. Pat, here's our documents thus far. This is just an an updated set. Uh, it's about a thirty percent set. So this is the demolition. This is the, all the under drainage that would go around it. And then the field.
What do you have to do with the base of the track?
Uh, our plan is to leave the base, just peel the top off and put another coat down. So we're trying to keep it reasonable and not go overboard with this project, okay? Uh, you can see the crown of the field there. So they've got these basins, huge basins, a pipe in, stone. And that'll be where the water will collect and then slowly release. Like I said, this is a about thirty percent set. Do the different lines. Lines for soccer. For Musselman, Hedgesville. Um, we've got some auctions here and we need some additional survey information, so we're currently acquiring that. One of the things that we're looking at is a sidewalk dig that runs here and gets you down. And along the entire front and up on the other side. That's one thing. I know we've talked about this area right in here. Uh, over here and and on that side, as far as stoning it, you know, putting rock, something to where it's minimal maintenance.
Is that the correct field? The only thing I think about the rock is the weed growing up in it.
Batter down.
Okay, yeah, if it's done right, that would be fine.
Well, I don't think you can stop her from settling in there, seeds from getting in there and weeds coming up eventually. You're going to have to treat it or spray it or.
It's all maintenance.
Right, if you don't do that, then you got a hillside there that has to be weeded uh in in an area where. You're going to, you're going to be throwing the grass onto the field or onto bleachers or, you know, so.
But, you know, overall, the sites, uh, the sites here, it's like Jim was explaining when we're a field guy. You know, it's not going to be overly large. It's going to be, you know, from a soccer standpoint, you're not like a regulated field. But uh, most high schools aren't.
The soc- the soccer field would, just for clarification, it does meet the criteria that the state lays out for for size. When I talk, e- even though we, the soccer field will be smaller than the the current soccer field that they have.
It's a hundred and eighty-five feet wide.
Yeah, I think their current field is two hundred, two-ten. It's one of the widest in the state.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the max distance. This would shrink down a little bit. You're, you're at one eighty-five and length is three hundred sixty.
So.
I don't think, we we can't go any wider based on what I'm seeing here. We're we're pretty well maxed out.
No, we expected that. We expected that. That was one of the things that was going to have to be given if we, if that was the site.
Yeah, you said that when we left there.
It's tight, you know, you got them, you got these bleachers right here. You're right up on the field. You know, it's a great uh high school environment, you know, fans right on the field, you know, that's, I grew up on a field like this. Where you're, you're right on the field, you're not behind the track, so. Any questions on either field? The coaches get abused by the fans, yeah, yes. That is one. Any questions on either field, track? Okay.
I got a question.
Yes.
What about the field hockey that's starting to get bigger around here or the field?
You mean lacrosse?
Uh, lacrosse is um.
Is lined on that field.
Yeah, we talked about.
Where was that at? Right here. So you see the lacrosse lines here.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I believe that's the orange.
It's the, the keys up in the top left corner there, God, it says which color to what.
Blue, uh, blue and orange. At both locations, so I I'm not going to lie, it gets busy. So if you have lacrosse and it is highly popular and you're using it for lacrosse every day. You probably want to go with the lines. If it's every once in a while, you probably want tick marks, little spots in the grass. you probably wanna go with the lines. If it's every once in a while, you probably want tick marks, little spots in the grass.
I believe we have, didn't we have the state champion lacrosse? Uh, at Hedgesville.
So it's real deal here.
It's a real deal.
We'll go with the lines.
It's, it's a real deal. And, and the state runner-up in.
But like this version.
Boys soccer and.
The lines get blurred with the, with whatever that gold, yellow mustard football on the screen. You know, your lines kind of get blurred, so color selection is very important whenever you have that many lines.
Oh, yeah.
So.
So you let the school check out the field design, I mean, they're all the same price?
Did they respond back with the gold end zone and the blue end zone?
I did not see a response. They wanted colors. Up on this one here. Uh, they, uh, we've been working with Jessica Alhawes.
I know we have. I, I wanna specifically come and ask about that question. I, I think they've missed that.
Okay.
I don't think you wanna have two different end zone like that, but maybe they do.
We'll keep working and it's not. We have time on the colors. It's more of how much striping i- i- do they wanna see? Straighten, as in the, the lines, you know, for the different sports and athletics. Okay, Tomahawk, I'll give you a quick update here on what we've done. Uh, it's an addition on the back side of the, uh, facility right here. So your parking lot addition back here, uh, your ball field will be, will have to either be moved entirely or shrink in size. Because you go, you see these lines as they get clo- closer and closer, that means the grade is dropping off. So the ball field is gonna either have to go somewhere else or.
Could we go back to the building floor plan? Pat, could you show me where that kitchen was? I remember there was an issue about the kitchen.
Yeah, kitchen. Is it over here on this?
Twenty over some, I'm sorry, it's up here.
Kitchen's up here, yeah. Yeah, it's in this corner here, is the kitchen.
Okay, so that, that has to be another project, another time.
Well, we talked about putting in the future maybe a freezer that will alleviate some space. That'd probably be the easiest solution for them to have more space. Yeah, and there's room.
To make space available inside.
Yeah, there's room for a freezer in between the building and there's like a cooling tower there. So that would be the best solution, I think, to, for them to upgrade that kitchen.
I, I just remember it was an issue because you had a kitchen in the comments area, the freezers in the comments area where kids have been gym and everything.
Yeah, yeah, the solution would be to put that freezer out there in that space eventually, yeah. All right.
All right. So from a, a layout standpoint, uh, ten classrooms. It follows pretty close tie, I think, to your other, your other wings in the building, so to speak. You have several four. You know, classrooms, the only difference on this one is because we are running out of flat land and real estate. We're out of the ground over here. Pretty high. So we need to come back to to the same elevation as you exit or enter into the building, uh, through the sides. Restrooms, work lounge, storage, data, electrical, you know, uh, faculty toilet, and again, your classrooms line up. Some windows, prep and storage down here. Pretty simple, straightforward. This is one of the projects CMTA is working for on the, uh, performance side. And I know there was some, there was some discussion around geothermal here. However, after looking at the numbers and with the committee, uh, in order to hold that budget at fifteen point eight, we had to go back to the traditional boiler and, and, uh, cooling tower here.
One, one, uh, a- after we decided that. Then, we have all this money left to build this new elementary and media school, so, or I can't just spend two million dollars, but geothermal. Tomahawk, yeah.
And not build an intermediate?
No, I mean, it's, the intermediate's gonna cost you more than two million dollars.
That's what I mean, instead of building an intermediate?
No.
And build an intermediate. So it would be additional on top of that. You're, my point is, you're gonna, if you build the pre-K five or Falling Waters Elementary and Intermediate, you're using all the funds. That was dedicated to those two elementary schools.
The, the, well.
So you don't have any money left over to put towards this.
Well, we didn't have the money to start with to build the intermediate school.
But because of the reduction in student population from what was, what we thought was going to be, based on needing space for pre-K, we were able to reduce that population to, to use that money for an intermediate.
Yes, which is how much? Twenty-five million?
It's, it's the same square footage. So what we were gonna pay plus a buffer of square footage for making the laboratory and the common area is a little bit larger. That, those numbers are gonna stay the same.
Yeah.
Now, we can, we can do without the intermediate school, like I said before, and, and just shrink the size of those those K-two schools, and then we can do, we can do other things. In my mind, the priority was if we're able to shrink those sizes down, priority would be, you know, because I was already trying to find a place to put intermediate students from up there. That's a priority.
Right.
Rather than, you know, geothermal.
Well, I agree with that, but you lost my, you lost me somewhere, because this intermediate school is gonna cost a lot more than two million dollars, so you lost me totally.
So if we build, if we were rightsizing the facilities at Mount Ridge and, uh, Falling Waters for the elementary buildings. Okay, so instead of building eighty thousand square foot building that was in the bond, you know, it was up to eighty thousand. We're, we're going to build fifty-five to sixty thousand square foot building.
Yeah, you're reducing this, the size.
That's correct.
Yes.
Which also saves money.
Right, but then you're adding on an intermediate school.
Correct, so the.
And making it larger.
So the difference between the reduction of the elementary schools and the additional square foot for the intermediate is very close to a wash.
You've, you've reduced an eighty thousand foot building down to sixty thousand at, at two sites, thus acquiring forty thousand for the intermediate school, and we have to come up with between five and ten million dollars.
I was just purely round numbers and.
Yeah, you know, we have to come up with.
That's what I wanted to hear, how much do we have to come up with?
Well, he doesn't know you.
Okay, got it. All right. I'm just trying to think of it all.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're.
If you wanted, my recommendation is if you want geothermal, the board should transfer money from another account into the bond to pay for the geothermal.
No, that's, that's just a thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that was just a thought.
Yeah, yeah.
If we had that one tiny building, intermediate school.
But all these energy saving things. There, it's the money available to pair down any costs of geothermal, it's a sizable amount.
That was evaluated, and it still wasn't enough to bring this one in and complete your other projects. And it, it, it's trying to, again, maximize at fifteen point eight for the number of buildings that are in dire need here. Right, that, that was looked at. I mean, we, we considered not doing some of the buildings. It's like, you know, how do you not do Winchester or Burr, you know?
Remember you telling us.
Yeah, it's very much right on, we wanted to stay within budget.
Right. And it was discussed. If, if, if the board wanted to, you know, felt really strongly about this, then that was fine. It was just, you're gonna have to increase the, the dollar amount.
Standing is down the road will pay for the, for the, during the energy savings, because, by going the conventional way. But we don't have any choice right there.
Yeah, right now. Just a thought, okay, sorry to put another.
No, it's, we're, we're all good. We're all good. I'll just let you know, there are multiple things going on at this facility. Okay, we're working with CMTA from the engineering side and, uh.
I mean, how many students are there at Tomahawk?
How many are there now that? Yeah, probably six hundred thirty, something like that.
So this will take us up to how many for that? Six, twenty, I can see. Eight classrooms, two hundred additional students?
Well, there's a, the ten classroom addition. It's, there are six classrooms already in portable, so six, six, nine rooms are already in.
This is to absorb the six additional portable classrooms that we have. Provide additional growth space of four classrooms.
Okay.
Remove those six.
Those six are gonna be relocated.
We're relocating it because we need them other places because it grows.
So this is Martin Burke High School, and what we've done here is we're, we're gonna expand the stage. We're removing some seating, we're gonna redo pretty much the entire auditorium. Uh, on the back side of this, we have dance, choir, theater, and band. Okay, and, uh, one of the concerns was restroom. You know, and ADA accessibility to the stage. So what we decided was, let's put a connecting door into the auditorium to this corridor that will allow people to use the restroom here. And it'll allow people that need to get to the stage, because this will be the same elevation as the stage. Which is also the same elevation when you come into the back of the theater, the, the auditorium. So that's real quick, high level of, of that one.
Will the band room have a higher ceiling than the existing band room?
It should be, yeah. I think they're here now. Well, we're still working out the actual heights with the staff, but I, I think, uh, the last I heard was twelve feet.
This place smells like a, a purple plaque.
So, that's, uh, that's that particular. Damon, you got a question?
Yeah, um, so, I'm gonna look at this drawing while I'm driving, but, um, that extension for the auditorium, is that going, um, where right now there's just, um, an open concrete area?
Yes, sir, to the right.
All right, so it's like towards Bulldog Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay, and do you, how long do you think, um, the auditorium would be, I guess, closed off or accessed? Or to get that all completed, like?
So we've talked with the principal about that. Um, a lot depends on lead times. We wanna make sure that, you know, we have the material before we shut it down. But, um, you know, you're looking at a six-month process at a minimum. And what we talked about was after the spring session, I think there were some events in the spring. As soon as that happened, then we could take the, uh, auditorium over and renovate it and then turn it back over before the winter, um, presentations or, you know, performances.
Okay. I just, where I'm concerned is, well, the only thing I was thinking of, like, you mentioned the band and everything, so, like, where would those students, and theater, where would those students practice or do anything? I guess they have to go to the gym?
So we would phase it in a way that we would construct the new addition uh, before we did anything inside the building. Once we construct the addition, then the students would have ability to go out into the new addition while we were under renovation on the inside. Uh, so construct the addition and then the following summer. So this is gonna be a drug-out process. This isn't gonna be a quick construction process. The following summer, start on the dance and the choir up here. This is built, uh, we start this year, finish it next summer. Meaning summer of, this is starting summer of twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Damon can't see you doing that, though. So Damon, what we're talking about is the, the the addition out on that concrete area where you're talking about will be the first thing completed, which will give space for the people that are in the other two classrooms to move out there, and it's gonna take place over two summers.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
If you could go back to the drawing there, no, 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 you won't have.
Hallway, yeah.
From the upper right-hand corner, you have that, that hallway over, over.
Right here.
Upper right.
Okay. See, that, why do you have that little room or external, no, why do you have that external thing to the outside where you have the two breakout doors? And then the top room, you have the door there, just pretty.
The alcove on the outside.
Yeah.
The two doors exit right there.
Why, 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 I mean, why do you have that? Because that would be a management, I mean, security issue with kids in there. Why don't you just have the wall straightened and just have one wall between the two?
Straight here?
Yeah.
We can do it.
I, I mean, I'm just.
That's additional roof, it, I mean, just cost, yeah.
I mean, you would think it'd be cheaper to just have the wall go straight and make that room bigger on the top and.
And then they would have to get their equipment out and out?
Yeah, you still have to have the hallway there, Pat, because you, you've gotta be able to, to have equipment from the van down here to wheel out. And to wheel into the stage. It can't be incorporated into a classroom. Is that what you were talking about?
I was just thinking of eliminating the hallway there.
Right. Now, we, we, we have to have an access.
Oh, you have to be able to get out here.
Yeah, I'll, okay, okay, I see what you're saying. You couldn't have.
I mean, we can move the wall out there, but we're still gonna have the walls on the inside.
And we could.
You see?
You're still gonna have the whole.
Right, right.
You could flatten, you could make this, you know, straight.
John, what he, what he was thinking is making that straight across and then increasing the size of that room at the top.
Oh, yeah.
But we still, we still have to have the hallway to be able to get, you know, it's gotta be wide enough for them to wheel carts and things. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. And it's, and we're designing it so that they can have access to the stage through there. So that's, that's multiple multiple areas that we're gonna have access for.
I'm just thinking about where, I'm in Mouse High School.
You're trying. You're trying. Keep going, John. That's good.
Overall, that's, that's where we are, uh, on, on our projects. We are. There's, there's a lot going on, to say the least, and as soon as we get the final uh, go-ahead from Mr. Stevens on the ed specs, then, you know, our team's ready to be here. They're excited about getting started on these new buildings.
Is there any way we can have a copy of the, uh,
I'll send Jessica.
Plans, but the, uh, something like, yes.
Not a problem.
So we're in agreement to give you without a boot?
You, you give me the agreement, and then I'll work it out with him.
Yeah.
So what are, what are your agreements?
We're agreeing to allow you to pursue the intermediate own, uh, primary school, uh, reconfiguration.
Okay. Now, moving, moving forward, while he's trying to do all of this, I, I do want to tell you that relatively soon we're gonna need to I'm telling you that we, I believe it's important that we move forward with the K-two plan as the ed specs are. Have a connector so that they are all technically under one roof, but that it is a K-two side and a three-five side to the building instead of stacking them. If we stack them, I think that we're, we would be in danger of having to redo the entire ed specs process. Uh, and then you just end up having them rely on each other if you do that, a lot like the one that we saw before, right? Thank you, Mike. That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I'd like a double burger, I'm like, just that.
Well, a- and there's pros to that, though.
Yeah, it's gonna be discussed.
We are gonna talk about it.
So there's gonna be a couple of things that'll dictate, um, and, and one of them's gonna be length. So once we get the survey and we do some, so we gotta do some master planning on the two sites.
Yeah.
Falling Waters and Mount Ridge. And that is actually our next step. Once we have the survey, next step, master plan. That'll tell us.
We would then, we would then take that master plan, put it together, start working on our SBA presentation on how we're gonna present things to them. Let them know that we've had to change, um, you know, an approach. Um, and, and move forward with that. The, the pro to stacking them is more than the things. Um, and, and move forward with that. The, the pro to stacking them is more than the things we've even talked about. There may be room for a middle school up there if we do that, although a middle school takes a lot more space. Uh, and the layout of the land, I'm not sure that we're gonna have space for that middle school.
But that's part of the master plan.
But that's for us to look at, so if we stacked, we may be able to save millions of dollars on property, you know, it may be worth stacking.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so.
I mean, it's a good deal.
It's a lot, it's a lot. Well, we know it's a lot because we're continuing to look, because we need more property, by the way.
Yes.
Just to let you know. So. John, I appreciate you coming and being available, um, you know, it's a long way from home and I, I appreciate you being here. If you, uh, if you wait, uh, I mean, you can go to your hotel, I can give you a call when we get finished here and we can hit, uh, Mountain Ridge.
Yeah, if you want, I'll, I'll, I'll just go somewhere, do a little bit of work while I'm waiting on you and then we'll, we'll head down there.
You're welcome to go back to my office or to your hotel, whatever you want, I'll call you.
I'll be here, hotels already checked in.
Oh, you checked out there?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, got it.
I'm headed to Norfolk after this.
Well, he's, he's on his way to Norfolk, Virginia, so.
Any other questions? Damien, you have any other questions for me?
Hey.
Uh, no, no, I'm good.
Michael?
All right, first of all, to the group, uh, thank you, John, I appreciate your input on all these types of things. Uh, I think it's important for you to see the work that's being put, I know being on these committees gives you a, a small glimpse at it, but to understand that this is, this is a major part of Berkeley County Schools, you know, we're running a school system, but we're also building a school system at the same time.
I, I forgot to mention, no impediments to instructions, put enough utilities in for the restroom. I'm tired of seeing, I'm tired of seeing, at least it's taking structural time, waiting to leave the bar. Yeah.
Okay, at, at this time, you wanted to have a brief discussion about the resolution?
Yes, yes.
It's behind her and them.
So it's with the agenda yet or?
Okay, we have a. We have a, let's see, what's. We, 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 we met with the, two of the county council members and now their county commission. And what we're asking here is to allow the county council to be able to, uh, implement the, uh, Local Powers Act, which allows the, uh, acquisition of, uh, impact fees. In order to do that, this county has attempted twice to pass a zoning ordinance and has failed both times. So we're asking our legislators to remove that criteria uh, from the, uh, language, it's, uh, it's in code seven dash twenty dash six, paragraph A, sentence four. Direct, and it's language we're asking them to strike is drafting and adopting a comprehensive zoning ordinance. County Council, County Commission already has a building code requirements, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, I forget what the third thing is, but, uh, this fourth item has been what is stopping, this would, make sure we get the press a copy of this since we're discussing this. I do want to offer an amendment to it after our discussion yesterday with one of the delegates. And that is that we put in here. Jessica's. First before going for that, I want to say that, uh, the board members and in particular, Ms. Manuel and Ms. Bobo helped me a lot in the drafting of this, this, uh, resolution. So, and I appreciate your own show. Um, but I want to put in here that the impact fees be, uh, utilized for classroom construction.
So the last line would say, further resolve.
No, no, that's a recent thing. Uh, that's, that's who we send it to, uh, let's say this.
That's who you send it to.
Yeah, further resolve, the copies of this resolution we sent, I'm trying to find where I put it.
I didn't see where.
We didn't add one yet.
Yeah, we didn't add.
We didn't, we didn't add it yet, that's where I'm trying.
Should be in the whereas part, on the top, where you further resolve.
Whereas, whereas the impact funding will primarily be used for the construction of classrooms, is that what you wanted to say?
Uh, yeah, see, I guess it's the second whereas, it continues student population, where, where is additional construction of education base? Okay, uh, yeah, just, uh, we're, put it in, in that sentence, you. I want you to do that, but, uh, we will put the, uh, we want to indicate that these impact fees will go into, into classroom construction. The plan is, uh, we're not taking a vote on this tonight. Uh, it'll be on the agenda Monday as a monitoring item. I want to make sure the public is aware that we're doing this. Not trying to run it through at the last minute or surprise people, because there will be people who have concerns and opposition to probably this. I don't know for sure, but I, I want to, I want our community to be aware that we're doing this before a final action take. So this won't be up for passage until the second meeting in September. It'll be on the agenda, uh, on Tuesday for the under monitoring and we'll just make sure that, that the public meeting, this being one of the, uh, we're giving our community awareness that we're trying to do this. And this is directed to our legislators, that's where the change must be made. But there will be an amendment of, this version is not the final version. Uh, that second whereas will include the language that the impact fees being used towards classroom construction. Any, any questions? Damon, you don't have this, do you? Or you have, you, you have a copy of it from a previous, uh, mailing or distribution, correct? Mr. Wright?
He wants to, I think he might not.
Okay, he might have something else, he's doing, he's working at home or his. Michael, do you have any questions?
Uh, have we run this by, uh, our county commissioner?
Yes, uh, no, we haven't run this by, the reason being is we didn't want to have copies, amended cop, or unamended copies floating around before we had a final version.
Well, it's been discussed.
Yeah.
It's been discussed.
It's been discussed.
I think it's like this exact language.
Yeah, uh, just, I, I talked with one of the commissioners and he said that they, they put, ranked this number two in the legislative package. Somewhere they, they've had a discussion about what they're gonna ask the legislature for. And, uh, they're asking for this language to be removed as well. And Jackie and I met with two of the commissioners once ago, along with our superintendent. And, uh, we, uh, we talked about it there as well. This is.
Thank you.
It's basically a word by Hatton Handbag.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good work, though.
Morning?
Good work.
Yeah, but it goes to Stan. Okay, Ron, uh, do we need to go in the executive session for your, right in here, superintendent goals and objectives?
I think we do.
Okay, under six nine eight four, we're putting together the goals for the superintendent, uh, doing this, uh.
Need a motion to go in the executive session. Second.
Second.
Moved to second, discussion, all those who favor signify by saying aye. Personae, motion passes. Thank you, Matt, for coming today.
Thanks, all.
Okay, make a motion to come out of the executive session at, uh, three forty, uh, four forty-two. Seconds by Mr. Martin, it knows, sir, up the executive session, you need to write it down for Jessica. Okay, motion to adjourn. And second, we're up.